All right, um, thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. We're gonna go ahead and get started. And we will begin with a roll call first.
Larry Jepson, board member.
Randall Bagley, board member.
Steve Norton, superintendent.
Roger Paltzfer, board member.
Kathy Chris-Jensen, board member.
Chris Corcoran, board member.
Jeff Nielsen, board member.
Terry Rhodes, board member.
And Dale Hanson, business administrator.
All right, thank you. Okay, I will go ahead and lead the pledge and state the, um, mission statement.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission is to educate students for success in a changing world. And I think we can forego the public input, right? Okay, um, all right, so we just have some, um, short reports. And then we'll talk about our goals and board evaluation and the strategic plan, which will probably take a little bit of the time. And the district has kinda helped us out with some things, so I think it might go a little bit faster than planned. Roger, we'll begin with you.
Okay, I just, uh, high school athletics right now is going through realigning the classifications. It's gonna take a few months for that. The other problem we have is I've been getting, uh, six, seven, eight, ten emails every single day for people, from people that want us to sanction boys volleyball. So...
Boys volleyball?
What do you guys feel? I, you know, I'd just like to know if you, uh, right now, we're in a lawsuit with girls' football because they wanna. And it's in trial right now. It's been going on for two years, and it's in court this week.
Is that for the whole state of Utah?
For the state of Utah, high school athletics. So what do you, I just, you know, I have to vote in November, and I'm getting all these emails from people that want boys volleyball sanctioned as a high school sport. What do you think?
I, you know, I would kinda, I would have you contact your four principals and athletic director. It's an, it's an issue I know overall, trying to keep the boys and the girls with equal opportunities. And I think that just makes it worse if we bring on...
Yeah, and see, I've, I've talked to some of them. Mike Monson didn't want them, uh, to go ahead with it, but I've had parents from Skyview.
Oh, I'm sure.
I've had parents from every school.
Yeah.
And I, you know, someone said that, uh, Mrs. Foster and Crosby are all for it, it's rid line.
I don't know.
Uh, some of the principals in Salt Lake and that area say, we've got enough to do. We don't want more on our table. But I think, you know, we have to look at what the kids are missing out on, and we have a bunch of people going, starting to play in volleyball, so.
Well, what's the, what is the requirement? I mean, if, if there's an offering, because really, anybody could come and say, hey, I want my kid to be able to do this, right? Is there, what, what are, what is the law right now? Pardon my ignorance, but I don't know.
They have to meet with the high school athletics and the board of trustees and present their case. And, uh, we've already voted down boys volleyball. We did that in the spring, last fall.
Voted down just because why? Do you know what the reason was?
Uh, there wasn't enough interest. But Utah County, uh, those high schools have really been putting a lot of pressure on because BYU is
Sure.
very good at it. And they want their boys to be able to play just like the girls. So I represent, uh, our region. And, you know, we've gotta make a decision, but...
What's the financial?
Yeah, that's, yeah, what's the financial?
There's no income really from volleyball.
No, so you're...
So it's an expense, is what you're saying?
Yeah, it's...
Well, yeah, a little bit of expense because you have to pay for some, a coach.
Officials.
Now, we already have the facilities.
Referees.
Referees we'd have to pay for.
Travel. Travel.
Travel.
Uniforms.
So, I don't know, I, I just wanted you guys' opinion, and then I'll check with the principals. But, uh, the principals say, we've got enough to cover right now. And I says, hey, yeah, you're covering it, but maybe we need to give the boys a chance too. I don't know.
Yeah, we just barely...
Larry, you were a volleyball coach.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Once they caught on to it, the guys would love it. But, uh, I think there's still a little bit of the stigma up here with many of them that it's a girls' sport. But, uh, once they got going, the guys would, uh, really like it. We, I had a lot of boys at North Cash when I was coaching there that were very interested in it. When I went to Mountain Crest, it was not so much.
Yeah.
Well, I know the issue before your board is always trying to be, by Title IX, you have to have equal opportunities. And we've always had more opportunities for boys than we have girls. And so I, I know they've had that discussion, so I don't know if that's playing into this decision or not.
Yeah, it is, because they say there's enough, but
Yeah.
if they take them to court, you know?
Oh, yeah.
So does it, Title IX says that there needs to be equal opportunity between males and females?
Yes, and they judge that on participants.
But not necessarily in each sport, you know, it has to have equal opportunities.
And so football really knocks it out of kilter when you have a hundred and a hundred and ten kids on a football team. You don't have another corresponding girls' program
Right.
that counters that. So if you add another boys' sport, it just makes that worse. But, uh, I was all in favor of adding lacrosse because it, it fit the bill for a group of kids that were just different than most of the kids playing in the other sports. And probably this one would be too.
So how do we set a precedent if we say, yeah, let's go with volleyball, but then we don't go with something else? What is the criteria that you would judge against to decide whether or not to accept it?
Uh, just equality, you know, if it's equal, there's an equal number of sports, boys and girls. I don't, it's, it's just a, depends on what, uh, you're gonna get most pressure from. And this volleyball's gonna be something that's really pressurized.
I'm not against it by any means, but, um, I found it interesting that when we were doing the realignment of the schools, we hardly got any attendance for the, the academic side of it, but the night we talked about sports, I couldn't believe the place was, and people were just rabid, like the schools were training grounds for athletes, you know? And I thought, man, we've lost our perspective
Yeah, we have.
on what's going on here.
You know, when COVID started, people says, we want our kids to play. That was number one. Education was second. So, I don't know.
Yeah, I think one of the things I'd look at is to see how many club teams there are here to see what, how much interest there really is in the sport. Might be a few parents are trying to push it, just trying to feed the program to get it going. But, you know, it's like lacrosse and some of those. It blossomed as, as a club sport before it was ever adopted by the high school.
And that's what's happened with volleyball right now. It's, the club sports are really blossoming. And, uh, you know, down there on the road going to Nibley, they have the volleyball arenas for the girls. And now the boys have started to go in there too. And I'm not sure, is he building more there?
Yeah, that's what the plan is, uh-huh.
So, uh, I don't know. It'll be a good discussion, and we'll see what everybody wants.
So from the litigation side of it, what, I mean, these people are suing, what ground do they have to stand on? What's our risk in the whole?
Uh, with the football, you know, they didn't want just the girls to play the foot, on the boys' football team. They want their own league, because girls can play football.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but, uh, the two girls that are suing Utah High School Athletics right now, they've graduated. But the lawsuit has been going for
Three years.
three or four years now. And it's just barely made it to the courts, so. It's just costing people money, and I'd hate to say, boys volleyball is headed in the same direction. I don't wanna see that.
Roger, is, um, ultimate frisbee sanctioned?
No.
In, in our school district, I'd be more inclined to sanction that before boys volleyball. Or in our region, because there are so many more club teams of boys, um, on ultimate frisbee teams than, and that's a, that's a bigger club presence here than boys volleyball.
And I think it has been in the past, but I think now you're seeing a more, a bigger push for boys volleyball clubs.
Even if they...
From the emails I've been receiving, that's what I've been getting, so.
Well, you could ask all of the, well, I guess you did ask the principals.
Yeah, so.
Well, I just had one other question on that too. Dale, how much would it cost to fund a boys' volleyball team based on what it does for other teams? Do you know?
I mean, your, your coaches' salaries. And you, I don't know, you're looking at having a varsity, a JV, a sophomore team. If you go to that extent.
Do you know what it costs for the girls' volleyball coaches and stuff?
Yeah, not off the top of my head.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to picture in my head, probably a gap or something.
Right.
I would think salaries and that would be, oh, well, if you have four high schools, you're gonna be probably seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars just in salaries alone. And then you've got transportation costs, I'm sure are gonna be very expensive. Yeah, except as far as facilities, we have those in place already.
Yeah.
Uniforms and equipment can be a small cost, but...
So what about principals? Are they overworked that they can't cover one more sport?
Oh, they put, they have...
I know they go every night.
They have a full night scheduled already, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, they would just, I mean, um, we've always suggested, we've always been able to add the, the sports. But it, but I, I do think that you need, you really would need to get a count of how many boys you really actually have playing in the valley. Because I, I'm with Terry, there's a whole bunch more playing ultimate frisbee. And, uh, and it touches a different ki, a, a different group there. But I, we, we can make it work. I, I served under a superintendent once who did his doctorate dissertation on the cost of extracurricular activities. And it's, if you take the total budget of what you're dealing with, it was less than three percent across the country, the amount of money it took to run the, uh, the activity programs compared to the, what we spend on education. So it's really a good investment in kids. But you're always gonna have that next sport.
The next one.
And then, and if the, if, if the Utah Activities Association's really trying to equalize, I think ultimate frisbee would bring more girls in to counter football than adding volleyball. But that's just...
Would there be a problem with sharing the facilities? Because girls now, they use the facilities.
Oh, you'd have it, you'd have it at a different time.
Different time.
That could be worked around.
Just like boys golf and girls golf, you know, they do it.
Different times during the year, okay.
College one isn't, it's, it's aligned with, with high schools, I mean, one, the women are following it.
Yeah.
So Utah State, they have a club volleyball, do they?
Yeah.
That's what some people are saying, well, these kids would be able to go on to Utah State and do the club volleyball too.
Yeah, but it's a non-scholarship sport, so I'm not sure what I mean.
Well, they just want the experience in high school, I don't know.
They can play club volleyball without...
Well, the good news is the infrastructure exists, so that, that minimizes the...
Yeah. Okay, I'm good.
Okay, have you gotten an opinion from, from all that?
Yeah, I'll talk to the principals and...
Okay, all right. Um, Terry, on the audit committee.
I just need to report to the full board from the audit committee, which is me, Kathy, and Randall, that, um, we made a, a executive decision to, um, we needed to renew a contract for an internal auditor, which Alan already has filled that role for us for the last five years. And his contract was up in June. So we, uh, started the RFP process with Scott, um, Rigby to, to contract with another, uh, accounting firm to get us a, or to contract with a, an accounting firm to get us another internal auditor. And as we discussed it, um, through the RFP process, we decided that, uh, as a committee, we decided that it would actually save us money in the long run and probably be more efficient to hire an internal, internal auditor on staff as a part-time employee of the, of the school district. And have them, and have that person act as our internal auditor. It solves, it would, it's kind of like a win-win-win situation. So we stopped the RFP process and with Scott and, um, went to Kirk McCray to, um, through HR to create a job description and, um, a job opening so that we could hire someone part-time for that position as internal auditor for the, for the board. And, um, I haven't heard that we've hired anyone yet.
No.
Because it's still open, I think.
It is, uh...
Um, so just so that you know, we, we made that change, um, expecting that, um, in the long run, it will save us money because we won't be paying, uh, a fee to hire a CPA from an accounting firm. We'll, we'll be paying an employee, and it will be a part-time employee. And, um, ideally, we'll hire a CPA, which will please the auditor, the state auditor on his, uh, risk assessment. Because then we can say that we have someone with the, the letters behind his name. And so it will move us, that along with all of us taking the training, will move us into the low-risk category on the state auditor's assessment. And, um, the other thing, uh, that we felt would be advantageous would be just to have that person on staff as a regular, as a regular, uh, employee would, would keep that person, would perhaps make that person seem less, uh, threatening to, and more helpful to, uh, all the schools, um, when we're doing internal audit stuff. So, anyway, that's our report from the audit committee, just so that you know, that's what we did. And does anyone have any issues with that, I guess I should ask? We couldn't see any reason to continue with the RFP process once we, uh, heard, or started talking about the, the benefits of having a part-time employee do that for us, so.
How hard would it be, do you think, to find a CPA that would take a part-time?
Um, well, we, I don't think it will be very hard because, uh, semi-retired or retired.
That's a good point.
CPAs in the valley who want to, you know, still be doing something.
Sure.
It would be an easy thing for them, and it would gain us, um, the, especially with someone who's semi-retired or retired, gain us the, the benefit of their years of experience
Sure.
and expertise.
Yeah, good idea.
So...
On the job form, did we specify a certain amount of hours? How many?
Yes.
Okay, how, what was that, if you could?
Uh, I think it's a hundred a year.
Hundred a year, okay.
Yeah, so that, that keeps the, it will keep the, uh, the total cost down below what the RFP would have cost us.
Yeah, because it's actually a non-benefited position, so, you know, the only, uh, benefits we pay for would be social security and workers' comp. But, uh, I know Alan is, is, is throwing his hat in the wind, the ring to, to apply for the position. So I know we do have a good individual that is willing and anxious to be a part of this, so.
When, when does the job close, do you know, or the posting close?
It should be soon. It, it, it might be actually tomorrow, the end of the week, I'm, I'm thinking. So what it does, instead of paying for the cost of, of paying for the name and, and cost of a, an accounting firm, yeah, we're just paying wages to an individual. We will use maybe a little bit of secretarial time from, uh, those in the district office currently that can help him maybe prepare reports or whatever, uh, in typing up reports. But, uh, outside of that, it's, it really seems like a good, a good fit.
Great, anything else? All right, thanks, Terry. Um, okay, the delegate assembly, Chris.
Uh, I attended via, um, whatever tool you're using, Zoom, I attended remotely. I think, Terry, you were there too, right? I think, I think I saw your name and, um, and the superintendent was there as well, attending remotely. Um, Terry, you were a voting, uh, person as well, right, through your other role? Um, I, I don't, you know, I don't need to run through all of the, kind of the legislative priorities. You guys can read those on their own. There, there were only a couple that were, I, I guess I'd say, slightly more discussion-worthy. Uh, and that they, not surprisingly, had to do with the tax reform issues. One policy request, I mean, there, there were a bunch, but the ones that, that specifically led to greater discussion were the two, the, the first one was the statement, "We support the Utah Constitution that designates income tax as a dedicated revenue source to fund public education." And the second was, "We support the principles outlined in SJR nine and HB three fifty-seven from the 2020 Legislative General Session." And, you know, those were the bills that were trying to, um, well, in the legislator's minds, trying to create balance, you know, so that they would have other sources of funding that would give them some flexibility. So there was a pretty hearty discussion about that, I think, um, you know, there were good arguments on both sides. I, um, I, I don't mind admitting, I voted against that one because I just felt like, uh, I, I felt like, uh, you know, in my own, um, thinking about these bills, I feel like it's a little bit of a Trojan horse, you know, for the state legislature that I feel like, you know, you, you can pass legislation, but once you, once you change the Constitution, that's forever. And, and, and then you pass these bills that, for the time being, you know, may, may manage the problem, but they can be, those bills can be repealed and changed very easily at any future time. I, personally, I, um, I, I know that my opinion doesn't matter that much individually, but I was a little bit annoyed by the discussion because there were some people on the other side who were basically saying, well, I know we're voting on this today, but we can't, we can't vote against that statement because we've already, you know, we already agreed with the legislature back. But I, and so I, I guess I'm, you know, having this be my first go-around at this delegate assembly, I, I, I found that to be a little bit unsettling that that's, because I, I guess I just felt like, why bother going to the delegate assembly and voting if, if, you know, if they feel like they've already made some backroom deals with state legislators, and so we should, you know, present a unified front? Because a lot changes, you know, e- even over the course of several months, as we've seen this year. So, um, anyway, that, that was kind of my personal view about that. But, um, but I thought there were some good discussions there, um, you know, about some of these issues. I mean, most of them are relatively not that controversial. Most of the policy initiatives that they outlined here were, you know, unanimously or narrowly unanimously passed. I'd say those were the only two issues that required much attention. I don't know, you know, Terry, you were there, and, and Dr. Norton, I don't know if you guys have anything to add to that, but...
I think part of the, part of the discussion on SJR nine was, was started by some misunderstanding that, um, SJR nine does not remove the earmark for education in the Constitution. It adds one line that, um, which is the same thing that happened in nineteen ninety-six, where we added one line to the Constitution to say that, um, that income tax would be, would pay for K-12 and higher ed. And now it adds one more line that would say, income tax pays for K-12, higher ed, and children and people, persons with disabilities. But it doesn't remove the earmark. And the, the legislature has never, never given us all of the income tax money. Not even when we were the only ones on that earmark.
Yeah.
So I think part of the discussion, um, at the delegate assembly was, and, and it got heated because, but I think part of it was misunderstanding that, um, because the person who started that, um, heated discussion said that SJR nine removes the earmark, um, of, for, of income tax going to, just to education, which it doesn't.
That, uh, yeah, that wasn't the thing that I disagreed with necessarily, I, but, but yeah, I think you're right.
So when we have our regional meeting, they'll probably give us a list of all of the things that you voted on?
Yeah, and in fact, I, I mean, you shared this with me, the, this, the, before I attended the delegate assembly. I, I don't know if the rest of you saw it, I, you know, certainly know that Terry's seen it and you and, and Steve, but if, if you want me just to kind of circulate that, I could. I, I don't think there was anything that they have listed out there that didn't end up passing.
Yeah, that one was close, the, that statement was close.
Probably like a third or something like that, but...
As I get ready to sometime leave the education scene in Utah, I finally have come to peace with that, what's happened over the years. And that peace has come to me because I finally realized that it doesn't matter what the language is. If they don't want to give you the money, they're not gonna give it to you. I mean, that's, that's just plain and simple. There was a time when there was plenty of money coming into the education fund to fund education. And so what's the first thing they do? They get one Utah policy review that says that income tax probably is gonna provide more money than education needs. And that's when they added higher ed into the mix. So you had two speaker and a house, uh, the, the president of senate, I think it was president of senate, said, "If we had the same rules in place for the last twenty years," and, and I, you just had to add, add on a few more years, he's, he was saying, in essence, "Education would have had an extra billion dollars." Well, under the old form, we would have had seven point eight billion dollars had we not had, added higher ed. So what he was just saying in essence was, if we had this language, it would have been better for you. And he doesn't, he hasn't even been around long enough to understand, because the legislature changes probably even more often than superintendents and board members. So they don't have an institutional history. And if you haven't spent a lot of time studying it, but I came to the conclusion that the, the, the discussion led me to start believing that if we'd had a better relationship with the legislature for most of the twenty-five years I've been here, we probably would have had more money in the coffers. But we elected to battle for probably fifteen of those years. It was sometimes just downright nasty. And they, they spent five years punishing us for not supporting vouchers. And, uh, we spent five years probably telling them we didn't want charter schools. And it just was a toxic, uh, atmosphere. And if anything, if we get three or four or five years of good relationship, we'll probably have three or four or five good funding years. But, uh, just because it's written doesn't mean they have to give it to you. And I, and I thought to myself, even when the good people back in the depression put that in, that that money would be spent, um, they didn't put in all the safeguards to say, and yeah, you can't lower the rate. "And yeah, you can't lower the rate ever." You know, you can't do things that don't give the money. You can't, you can't promise businesses that will allow you not to pay income tax, which is in essence, taking our money and giving it to business. And they've been doing that for years. So it's just that relationship that you gotta have. And that relationship basically, I think, is a reflection of how much the people in the state of Utah are really willing to put into education. And I think we, right now, we've got a pretty good feeling that they realize teachers aren't getting paid, and that's where that money would have gone. Most of it would have been in, in salaries because that's how we operate. And so I think we might have four or five, six good years until they come back with another voucher bill or something like that and, and we tick them off again, and then they'll punish us. And, but right now, I have really good, high hopes that we're going to have some good years. But they could, they could sink a whole lot of money into children and people with disability. There's a list out there of people who need services for disabled children and adults, and it's miles long compared to who they actually serve. And, and my assistant Carolyn has a boy, and they do get money for him, but there are a whole bunch of families that are just on a list waiting for that kind of help. And if you add children's health insurance and start paying that out of it, you could drain a lot of money away from education. So I think our best bet is just try and keep a good, a relationship with our legislatures and see if we can have some good years.
Anybody else have questions or comments? All right, well, thank you for attending those meetings and representing us there. Okay, down here on number four, community engagement discussion with Chris and Terry. And what I did want to kind of talk about for a few minutes is Terry's idea of moving to the schools occasionally for a board meeting and then Chris's suggestions for better community discussion. But before I turn it over to you two, I just wanted to say a couple of things. So on our evaluation that we took of the board, it looked like to me, and you can help me out here, Jeff, that our two weaknesses were having a strategic plan and communicating, communicating with our shareholders. Is that sort of?
That's what we decided, yeah.
Okay. So, and I know as I went through that survey, sometimes I just didn't really know what the answer was to those questions, so I put the one down like, "I don't know what, what that is." But I did want to bring out some things I was thinking about today as far as our community engagement and teacher input goes, that maybe not everybody knows is going on because you don't have to go to some of those meetings. So first of all, for the teachers, we do have the CEA, and they meet monthly, and they have a teacher from each school represent all of the teachers in that school. They get their input, and then the president of the CEA brings it to a PLC, a professional learning community, three times during the year, where board members and district, Steve and Mike and him and.
Gary.
And Gary are there. So if they have any suggestions or things that they wonder about, the district does take it down and try and work through whatever means to get that problem solved. Terry and I go to the faculty meetings once a month, and it only takes us four years to get around to every school. We'll be starting our, probably our third round in a few months. But we do take a suggestion box for the faculty so that they can put suggestions in or questions or anything that they have concern about. I type those up, give them to Steve, and then he gives them to either Mike or Tim or Gary, and they go back to the faculty meeting and address those issues. Is that right?
Let me just tell you that the, the operation of our, of our schools and the direction we've given our principals is that maybe not so many principals' meetings and faculty meetings. Our teachers are just overwhelmed right now, absolutely overwhelmed. Mike and I just spent an hour with a teacher out at Ridgeline, and she's a veteran, eighteen years, and, and she just poured her heart out that it's just tough. And so we're trying to take things off the plate that we can. And one of them was, we told our principals, "Just don't have so many meetings." And so you might find that you're not going to be able to get tired of as many meetings attending years you're planning, so.
That's okay. The other thing too is our support staff, they, they come to three PLCs during the year with ideas and suggestions and questions from all of the different schools, support team members. The administrators have their PLC three times a year where we meet with them and get their input and their concern, and they also have their principals' meetings. And then I think on social media, agenda's done a really good job getting information out on our website and through emails. So just in case nobody knew that those things were going on, I just want to start this discussion with that as a background. And Terry, you kind of liked the idea of doing a mayor's, a mayor's meeting and presented the idea. Is there anything more you would like to say on that before we talk about if you want to move forward this year with something like that?
A mayor's meeting?
Oh.
With your husband, you know.
You did, you did mention that we could.
I'm really confused now.
Okay. You could get to the, we could go to mayor's once a month meeting, I think was something that you talked about a few months ago, and then also the, hold the board meeting in different locations.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So anything you want to put in on that, and then we'll discuss it. And then we'll come to you, Chris.
Yes, I, and last time we had this, last time I brought this up, I used the word accessibility, but Chris used the word visibility. And I think that he's more correct. And especially this year, that is so hard for our teachers and principals. I think it's more important than ever for us to be more visible in the schools. And if we can't, if, if we can't, well, and those of us who can do it during the day can do it during the day, but I think it might go a long way to, to having more visibility if a couple of us during a board, during board meetings were visiting a school. And it's an easy thing to do because we've all done Zoom meetings, and so you can just set up a Zoom meeting and seven of us can be here and two of us can be in the remote And so anyway, that was the one thing, one of the, the things that we discussed before. But when you're talking about recognition, I don't know who chooses the book for new teachers each year, but this is this year's book for new teachers in our district. And I've read it twice because it's so good. And one of the things it talks about is that more than eighty percent of supervisors claim they frequently express appreciation to their subordinates, while less than twenty percent of the employees report that their supervisors express appreciation more than occasionally. And so it talks about employee recognition programs, like employee of the month or teacher of the year, is what I thought of. And it says, "These programs are inadequate for two reasons. First, the scale is all wrong. When we talk about the need to recognize employees, we're not aiming for one employee per year or month. The proper pace of recognition is weekly or even daily, not monthly or yearly." And then he goes on to talk, they go on to talk about that those types of programs breed cynicism. And I've seen in every school I've visited, when teacher of the year nominations come up, they roll their eyes and go, "Oh, whose turn is it this year?" Because realistically, if you have a teacher of the year program, the same teacher should get it every year because they don't change in what they're doing. They're still doing the same thing. So anyway, I, it's a great section to read in that book, but I thought about, how much money do we spend as a board on teacher of the year awards during the year?
Oh, a couple thousand.
We don't give checks to the teachers?
We only do.
Checks just go to the.
Teacher of the year, and also there's five classified employees that are recognized as employee of the year. That's all we.
And how much is their check for? When they're recognized as teacher of the year?
Teacher of the year is a thousand, the others are five hundred.
So then we're talking about thirty thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand, because we have twenty-five schools. Each school has a teacher of the year.
No, only.
Only one.
Only the district teacher of the year.
So the school teacher of the year, they just get their plaque, and then one person at the end gets the thousand dollars.
So it's, it's, there's not a lot of money.
Anyway, I wondered if there's something more fun that we could, as a board, recognize teachers, especially this year, or, or, or any staff that is more quantifiable? Is that a good word to use? Something like when they've taught, when they've had a thousand students go through their classroom that they've taught, or a thousand students that they've hauled on their bus. You know, because they, every year they have a certain number, so it may take them ten years to get to that point. What about who has had ten thousand students that they've hauled on bus or fed meals to or whatever? Do you know what I'm saying? That we could do some kind of, I mean, you all, you who have been teachers before, in what kind of recognition matters? I mean, I just feel like we need to do something more frequently to recognize teachers this year for all the effort they're putting in.
I've kind of been thinking about this too, not as deeply as you have, but that it would be a good year to make sure that all of the teachers and the staff and administrators know we're behind them and supporting them. Because I think they kind of look to us as the bad guys who are always giving them more work to do and less money to do.
Right. So I mean, like a secondary teacher, how many years would it take you to get to a thousand students that you had in your classroom?
A lot of the teachers have like two hundred and fifty a year. So it'd take four years.
Four years. So if we recognize somebody in four years after they started teaching, or ten thousand stu, I mean, if we had certain benchmarks, you know, kind of like a, a level up thing in a video game, you know, "Oh, you're at level one. You've taught a thousand students. You're at level two. You've taught five thousand students," whatever. And, and we send out lists of recognition and, and gave them some little gift certificate or trinket or something to let them know that we're thinking about them in this hard year. I don't know.
Okay. So.
For me as a teacher, and maybe I'm different, but I could have cared less about district recognition because I, the district was going to do what the district was going to do. The recognition that mattered to me was my principal. If, if I felt my principal was on board with me and supportive and recognized me, I was happy. And it, if he wasn't, it wouldn't have mattered what the district did as far as me being happy.
And one other thing to kind, to tie in with this, and maybe you all remember, when the district did give us little gifts at the end of the year or at Christmas or something, it was a little clock or whatever, I, I thought, "Why couldn't we use this money for something better than this clock that's going to break?" That was kind of my personal feeling about it. So when those little gifts were stopped, I was happy. The money meant more to me when it came, which I know sounds weird, but when you're buying a thousand dollars a year worth of supplies for your students so you can teach your class, that money helps go towards that aspect. But that's just, you know, a thought from me. Anybody else have any feedback?
So like a teacher, when they get to the thousand, the first level, they've taught a thousand students, you give them two hundred and fifty bucks.
That'd be great if our district were able to do that.
Money talks.
And I even like the coupons where you could go out to dinner.
Yeah.
I couldn't, I mean, that was something I actually could use. I could go out.
But it would be fun because we could, we could post those names, have agenda post those names on the website. That would be really simple thing. But it would, anyway, those were some things I was thinking about.
How would it work on a district level, Steve?
Well, I just, I just wrote down the general category of criteria for recognition. That's certainly one, one, one criterion. But I also think we could come up with some other ideas that, and we probably don't need to see if we can come up tonight, but we ought to be thinking about. I'm reading a great book too right now called Creating, Creating Magic, the guy from Disney who spent years. And I opened up to the first page one day and started reading, and it was right along your line. You've got to figure out a way on a dumb, daily, weekly basis to, and he calls it, I can't remember, capital that doesn't cost you anything. Praising and, and all this, great book, and maybe I'll grab you one for each of you to read. But yeah, it's a, it's a great year to concentrate on making our employees feel appreciated.
So how can we help at the board level?
Well, and like I say, I think putting our heads together and coming up with ideas of why and how to recognize, and just bringing up the discussion. I, I don't think you need to do away with teacher of the year. I, I know in some instances, but I've been here long enough that my most memorable nights in this room and over in that building are not the nights that we talked about budget or anything like that. It's when we heard teachers express their gratitude for, and most of that gratitude is for their principal and for their fellow teachers. It's not for us mainly, but, but I think we do need to continue to recognize that, but I think we need to come up with other categories. And I feel glad because my, that little clock I gave you fifteen years ago, it's still on my bedside and it works very well.
My girl, maybe we could just get that, right? Do you like this idea of putting together some other criteria that teachers could be recognized on?
I remember a couple of years ago, Debbie Reese won an award for teacher of the year, but we didn't have a plaque for her. And I remember, they says, "Well, let's just present it to her at the school." And they did that at the school. They had a little assembly and had the kids in there, and the kids just loved it here. They thought that was the greatest thing. And so I think if they could see, you know, the, the students themselves, seeing a teacher get the award and other teachers, I think that would play a big part. So, you know, maybe they could recognize.
Kind of what we do with the Huntsman when we, when we get one of those, and they are fun. And maybe we just ought to have our principals take the award and, and re-present it at the school.
Yeah, let the kids see what's happening.
I think any, any chance we get, and, and however we can help at, from, as board members, to recognize teachers at schools in front of their kids is, is a great, is great.
That's what happens with the hats off award. That's very successful at the, I mean, we have a lot of things we do that are not done through the district and, but I like the idea, and boy, this is a year to start.
So Randall, would you take the assignment by the time we go next week or the following to come up with a bunch of ideas and we'll all email him with any ideas that you and I, the person who would compile, you're very creative.
No, yeah, that would be great. Yeah, just, if you have any ideas, send them to me and I'll, I can come up with a little report to present here next week or in the following time.
They'll probably give you more than a week.
Yeah, let's do that.
So let's do it the first of the next.
October.
October at that meeting. Anybody have anything more to say on that?
No.
I'm glad you brought that up, Terry, because I've been thinking this whole time. How am I going to let all these teachers know how much I appreciate them?
Well, I think, I think even if we, it would be. Well, I think, I think even if we, it would be impossible for us, I'm guessing, it would be impossible for us to recognize all of the teachers and staff members. But if they, I mean, it's back to the visibility, uh, back to the visibility thing, you know? If somebody gets some, some cute award, ten dollar gift card to whatever, um, from the school board because they reached some goal, you know, of, of whatever the category is, then they'll start, all start to notice that, that we're noticing them.
And appreciate them.
And appreciating them, and, and the principal can deliver it to them. Hey, this is from the school board, way to go.
Will you include administrators and the support staff too?
Sure.
On that as to maybe some ideas of what we could.
Oh, and it, it's gotta be something that, that occurs within their normal scope. Yeah. Of responsibility, not something that's added on top of what they've already got.
Well, that's, that's why I can't, I'm, I'm a numbers gal, so that's why I thought of the thousand students teaching or driving or serving or ten thousand or whatever.
Yeah, gotcha.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention that the, the foundation has, they call it the Hats Off Awards for teachers. And I know they said it's been amazing because they present that award to the teacher in their classroom in front of the students, and, and they all have great stories that they can relate of, of how the children have just loved that experience.
Yeah, those, those business people who've helped us in that category are, were, it's been going for quite a while now, so. But we're so overwhelmed with the, with the, the fact of the teachers being so grateful for so little money and just being recognized, it, it just touched their hearts, and that's why some of them are still serving on the board. They just couldn't believe that two hundred dollars or a hundred dollars could mean so much to an individual, yeah.
And, um, Nucor.
Yeah, oh, of course.
As well, so that is another really great program to recognize, and, um, I'd put that on the list as well.
On the tools for schools.
Yeah.
Another opportunity.
Our, 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 uh, foundation has, for many years now, has just been doing a fantastic job of supplementing the school district and, and recognizing teachers. And when you, when you give them an award for writing up a grant proposal, uh, that's a recognition in itself, you know?
Well, it's a lot of work to do that.
Yeah.
Even if it's a simplified version of.
Yeah.
Okay, so then the next thing to talk about, how many of you would like to do that, try at least get one meeting at a, um, one of the areas, central, north or south, and do the board meeting, um, on Zoom so parents, are thinking parents and teachers could come to that one?
Well, I think it does matter to some teachers that we show up, I mean, obviously, to some teachers like at South Cash, that, that it matters to them that we show up at their schools, that we can, that we're willing to go into their schools, that we don't act like they're all quarantined and we're not, we're too high and mighty to go there. You know what I'm saying? And so, to some like Larry, he wouldn't care if we showed up. But to others, I mean, when he was a teacher, but to other teachers, every time I've been in a school, they're like, wow. I haven't seen, I've never seen a school board member in my school before. And, and that mattered, I mean, just the visibility thing.
So, are you tying this in with the, have a, one of the board meetings at the school, or is this, are you trying to thought here?
Nope, that's the same one.
It's probably, boy, I didn't expect it, I never saw it.
So, I, this is kind of rolling in back of my head, is when we did try to do the, um, parent university, and you went to so much work and heard, went to so much work, and then not one person showed up, other than the people who were running this out. And I was, if that would happen, um, and how much work would it be for the district if we tried it?
We, we can make it happen.
If it's a Zoom meeting, it's none, cause we just show up with our Chromebooks, we log in at the school, and we're part of the meeting here.
Don't feel too bad about the, the university, whatever, parent university. Education's really the only commodity that we put money out that when it doesn't happen, we're happy. I mean, seriously, when you go to, your class got canceled at university, were you, were you, were you deflated that you weren't gonna get something that day? You just moved it up there, you didn't have to go to class. So, uh, when you tie education into it and, and learning, everybody knows it's valuable, but sometimes they don't act like it's that valuable, you know, so.
Okay, so, should we set up one and see how it goes?
Sure, sure.
Is the district so busy with everything else that this is?
Well, let's, yeah, let's, let's shoot for, for November and not, uh, yeah, we've got enough.
But setting up a Zoom meeting is, is just writing the, I mean, creating the invite.
Yeah, but if you, if you, if you wanna be in the school and you wanna have some of the people in that school come because you're there in that school, I'm just telling, I, I'm just telling you, right now, the, they, they aren't looking for another meeting to go to, they aren't looking for anything.
They wanna go home.
No, no, and I don't care if no one shows up.
You just be there?
What I care is that they know we came.
Yeah, but I, but I think they would want to, to be there, so that's all I'm telling you. I, I walked out of my office tonight after talking to this teacher, and I had the same conversation with my daughter last night. Uh, and I saw that we had another training session going on in our, in our building, and I said to myself, we've got, we've got to back off and, and give these teachers some room to breathe. So unless it's absolutely essential that we're bringing them in after school, right now, I'm, I'm getting the cabinet together and we're gonna talk about just, let's just hold it for a bit.
So, do you think this would be a good idea to postpone until it kind of through with the coronavirus?
No, I think we can, I think we can start it, but I'd just say, give us till like the November first meeting or something like that, first week in November.
Okay.
And then we'll just, by then, I, I think we're gonna have a good idea of just how much of this is gonna be ongoing.
By then we'll be through homecoming week and had a couple more weeks after that to see what happens at the high schools.
Okay, so let's start at the north end, which school do you think we should hold it at?
I don't think it matters, uh, I, I mean, I, you can go to your big population centers, but I can tell you this much, it would mean an awful lot to go to some of your smaller ones too.
Like to go to Park.
And Lewiston and.
That's good.
Okay, so, all right, in November, we're, we'll shoot for a Zoom meeting at Terry Outraria, which one do you wanna have it at?
Any of them would, would be happy.
Lewiston? That's what I'm thinking, cause it's a new school and that technology, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all right, Chris, community engagement ideas, suggestions of things that we could improve on? Does that seem to be one of our work with areas?
Um, well, I, I've thought a lot about this, and it's, it's difficult because I, I think the theme is similar to, you know, the discussion we've been having. I mean, there's clearly a, a bringing a horse to water aspect of this whole exercise. You know, I've been now joining you for the last, I guess, what, year and a half? And, you know, you have to ask yourself, I mean, a similar question that, that was posed here and I think partly answered by Larry, what, what is it that motivates people? You know, what is it that motivates teachers? What gives them satisfaction in, in their jobs? You know, how is it that they wanna be recognized? And with, with other stakeholders, you know, the community, parents and, and other taxpayers and so on, um, you know, it, it's pretty clear what motivates them. You know, the, the issues that garner a lot more attention from the public, from parents and, and other individuals in the district are, like Roger pointed out, sports, certainly taxation, you know, is, is another one. You know, I, I, I feel like, uh, you know, I think Steve's kind of alluded to this, you can have all the meetings you want. If it's not compelling and it's not interesting, then you won't get anybody showing up. And so how do you engage the public in a way that, that gets them motivated to kind of understand, uh, you know, uh, what, what issues are kind of at stake in the district and, and how they can give us constructive feedback and so on, and? Uh, and I don't, I don't think I have a really great answer for that outside of, you know, I mean, if you just hold another in- informative meeting, which we do every couple of weeks with the school board anyway, then nobody will really show up. So, uh, unless, like I said, it's, it's something to do with athletics or tax, taxes or, you know, and this year, of course, the way that we were reopening schools, but, um, so I, I don't know if it's a matter of, uh, of, you know, we, we, we have, you know, certain guidelines in terms of how to hold a school board meeting. Uh, I, I think that, you know, and we do have parents come who are, who are more interested when it's something that impacts them directly. Um, and I think we all probably have mixed feelings and so, to some degree about whether, whether to, to be provocative enough that you actually draw people in, um, because.
What if we gave, would awards be motivating to people?
That's the other thing about these kinds of, uh, that's the other thing about, you know, uh, we, we talk about this in statistics all the time, non-random sampling. I mean, the people that write letters to the editor, the people that show up to council meetings, people that show up to school board meetings are the people that are generally dissatisfied. Um, and, uh, happy, content people don't write letters to the editor, show up to community meetings. So, you know, I, I think, I think there's maybe an approach that we could take that, uh, not, not every, for every meeting, but it might, you know, it might dovetail with kind of what Terry's talking about with, uh, with teachers. One approach may be to plan meetings that are focused on a single issue instead of having our typical agenda where you run through the same sorts of items, um, where you, um, where you really focus on one issue, you know, in that meeting. Sort of like, you know, a study group, except you invite the public and you specifically invite members of the public so you get a more representative sample. You know, instead of just leaving it up to people in the public to decide whom, you know, whom it is who will be represented. I, I mean, it would be interesting to just draw in voices of people who may not, you know, who, who might be relatively content and who may not ordinarily come to a meeting, but whose voices are still important and, and we might be able to learn from them. And if they're in a setting where we're having an actual discussion, they might learn something and that, that they can take home to their families and their neighbors. I, I do get a little bit concerned sometimes because I understand the way that we do public input. It has to be, it has to be contained, we can't just let it run amok. Um, you know, being a professor, I'm not a big fan of open mic nights, you know, uh, in my classes or in other venues because it can kind of, it can kind of go awry. But I do feel like there are times when it would be nice if we could have a discussion, you know, with the public instead of, uh, sitting up here on the dais and having them speak and then having us all muted, you know, as they go back to their seats, uh, not knowing if they've actually been heard. And so it may, it may be useful for us to think of, not in every case, but, you know, maybe a couple of times, uh, you know, um, of, of a semester, so to speak, like a couple times in the fall, a couple times in the spring, where we talk about, you know, we, we have a subject like the one that Roger raised today, something about sport, you know, something that, that the public really, um, you know, there are people that, that have some strong feelings about it. But we format the meeting so that we can have kind of more of a community discussion. And I'm not suggesting I'm an expert in how that would be carried out to make sure that you didn't have, you know, disaffected people who are dominating the whole discourse or anything, uh, you know, we'd have to, you know, there are ways of doing that, you could have a panel of people who are interested and keep the panel limited and have some other members of the public listen in and maybe give them a chance to ask questions. Um, there are ways of making sure that you stage manage that. Um, but that might be one way for people in the public to feel like we're being responsive, you know? And, and, and we could also choose some topics that would be pretty compelling. And, and we could directly invite people to that meeting, maybe from our own constituencies, to form the audience, you know, beyond the people who are welcome to come anytime, if, if that kind of makes sense, so. Um, it, it would take kind of some investment for us to prepare as a school board, but I think if we did that somewhat regularly, um, you know, the, the people might feel like, uh, you know, they're, they're understanding the issues. Like, I take the taxation meeting we had last year, the truth in taxation. I, I mean, it, it was, you know, it was so hard to respond to those people because we, you know, they were coming up here one after another, of course, they're the people that feel the grumpiest, but I'm not even sure a lot of them understood what, what, what the whole meeting was about. You know, I mean, Dale did a great job making a presentation, but, you know, there were a few people that, that came are people that I know, and, um, and I felt like, uh, you know, I would have loved to have just stepped out of the meeting and just had a chat with them and, and told them, you know, what, you know, do you understand what's going on here? What stepped through these issues? We, you know, what are the alternatives? What would you have us do? And that's the kind of conversation that we can't have, you know, in this forum, I think, the way that we do it. So I don't, I don't know if that would help, I mean, certainly with community engagement, we wanna be out talking to our constituents and, you know, talking to our neighbors. I think, my feeling is that, you know, I've, I've gotten a lot of emails, especially over the last several months, and I think all, all of us have, and so people know how to reach us, they know where we are. And so I think, again, from that accessibility standpoint, that, that's nice that we're able to do that and they can communicate directly with us, but in these forums, it might be, it, it might be good for us to, to, you know, home in on something that really moves people and then involve more people in the discussion of the school board meeting in a way that makes them feel like we're, we're actually having a discourse. I, I know that, you know, at the truth in taxation meeting, that, you know, a couple of people said, and I'm sure you've heard this many times over the years, oh, I feel like you guys are just gonna do what you're gonna do anyway, you know, so I, I can come here and speak up, but it doesn't matter. And of course, we all know it does.
Yeah, we're gonna change that format a little bit so we don't fall on at the same night that we have public input in the future, which would be better in my opinion. Um, another thing that I was kind of thinking about, if we want to be more visible, do we wanna take on, uh, an extra assignment and rotate like once a month? We each write just a little something for the teachers and the parents and the students, how great it is to be in this district, and put it on the website? Or do you think that's not good, I guess?
Kind of like a board entry every month?
Well, I, I think in the spirit of what, um, Larry was talking about, to highlight something, some positive things that happened that we've noticed as board members, you know, among teachers and students that we have in our circle.
Because that's a possibility for everybody to go to the website, and it wouldn't be having them come to an extra meeting. They could just revert on, uh, online and.
No, I think that's good.
It doesn't have to be a whole, you're not expecting like a whole long newsletter, right? Just a little paragraph.
Just a little paragraph from one board member each month, saying, this month we've noticed how hard teachers have been working, how great the kids have been, parents are so supportive of the masks, and because of that, our district is staying in school, we're helping the economy, thank you so much, we appreciate all you're doing. That end.
I think it's a good idea.
There's your first one, right there.
Go home and watch the meeting, yes.
And then Jenna could easily put it on.
Sure.
Just end it. I'm trying to think of things that don't require more work for the district, um, or extra meetings that people don't want to, to go to, but would still put across. What we want to put across, we just haven't quite figured out how to do that yet.
The sad thing is the best public relations thing we've ever done, we can't do now is having the kids come in and perform and bring all the parents here. That's, that's been the greatest thing we've ever done. Yeah, and we'll get back to that.
Yeah, we'll get back to that. Okay, so, Chris, I'm gonna ask you, would you put together some of the ideas that we've talked about, things that we could do, and maybe at the first meeting in October, I don't give you time to think about it, or do you want less time?
Yeah, I, I guess, um.
Otherwise you'd have a week.
I, I guess I, I'd be interested in knowing, you know, especially, you know, Dr. Norton, I, I mean, I'd be interested in knowing what you think of that.
I like your idea.
You know, a series of public study groups or something.
The, the first, uh, month meeting make, is an excellent place to do that. We haven't focused that towards the public.
We haven't focused that towards the public or inviting the public in, but that's, that's what that's set up for is for a nice.
The study group, right?
Study session to, to bring up ideas. And we have just been using the ideas generated here, and they're probably ideas that we could, so if you had a topic that you wanted to discuss, Roger's topic right there is a very good one that would, would probably draw in some interest. And that's ask our public how they feel about our activity program and the sports and the activities that we offer and whether they'd be willing to support adding additional activities. That would, that would get you at least a good first meeting.
Might get us more than we want.
It might. Yeah, you never know.
But, but if, if, if you, if instead of just having the usual public comments section, that's what I'm talking about, you had kind of a panel of people, like a combination of rational parents and administrators, where they could have a discussion in front of the public and we could still give them a chance to ask some questions.
Yeah.
In fact, now with Zoom, it's really easy to, to regulate a chat. I mean, we can have a tool where people could submit questions, and then we have a moderator who picks some of those questions out and presents them to the panel. I mean, there are some ways that I think we can manage that without being overrun. Or either that or we could just advertise every single school board meeting as truth in taxation. And the public, public would show up every time.
Football cancellation.
Yeah.
That would get.
You could bring up consolidation.
I was thinking you could just tell them we're going to discuss closing their school.
Battery changes.
We, we all know the areas that really bring.
People, yeah. Okay, so are you, are you willing to kind of put us something together? Do you want to do it for the next meeting or the one?
Actually, have that kind of discussion?
No.
I, I think, I think what, what I could do is maybe propose a plan.
Yes.
And then we could see if that would be.
Next slide, or do you need more time?
The worst thing we could do is rush to put it together and not have enough time. And like I say, this isn't the time to implement a whole bunch of new things.
Right.
Let's get the ideas down on paper and decide when we're going to do them.
So by, not next week, but the meeting after that, if you'll have some ideas, I mean, we'll just discuss them. And if anybody has ideas, shoot emails to him. So we've got Randall and you working on a couple of things that we can help by just giving you some ideas and suggestions as we think about them. And then Randall, when would you like to have your due date to meet?
Yeah, maybe not next week, but the following meeting.
The following meeting? Okay. All right. Are we good on that subject? Okay. So next, okay, all I want to do on this one, the board goals, is just to go over them and see if we accomplished them. We started working on them last June, and I think we've done pretty well on them, except for one. I can't remember which one it was. So the Cache County Board of Education focused on supporting policies and practices that promote student achievement in all areas. Anybody want to say anything about this one that we failed on or what we did well?
Can I just say that when I read these goals, I don't find a lot of actionable stuff in them.
You're right. We need to fix that in our strategic plan.
So I don't know how we can, so I mean, saying that, I don't know how we can say whether we arrived there or not.
Okay, good point. Anybody else want to comment? So the second one, will, the board will work on promoting an environment and overall climate in our district where our students and staff feel appreciated and respected. I feel like we've done that. I'm trying to think of what particular things we have done. But thank you cards have been sent by some of us, emails of thanks, attending their schools, showing appreciation when we're there for the administrators. Anybody want to add anything else? And we probably will want to just redo all these goals with what Jeff has kind of talked about with this board. Okay, third, the Cache County Board of Education will improve relationships with local and state leaders to better promote the programs of the district and to effectively communicate district needs. Personally, I feel like we have a better reputation, a better relationship with the legislators now than we did when I first got on the board, but I don't know how.
However, we're going to have new ones.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Again.
Yeah.
At least.
So that might be something we want to continue to work on.
That brings a question in my mind. Are the newly elected ones, even though they won't be in the position, are they going to be involved this fall in our legislative?
I talked to Carolyn about that. Logan is setting it up this year. And I asked her if she would suggest to them that the new ones be included, and I'll bring that up again because I think they should.
Absolutely.
And we might not get as good of a turnout from the older ones, but we would invite them as well if they wanted to come. You feel fine about that. Okay. Okay, so the fourth one we definitely have done, a little bit on hold right now, but the policy committee, Larry's done a really great job with that, and Tim and Jen have been helping, and they've been awesome. And then we've added this one last year for the three times a year to meet with a variety of students, students for input, and you did do.
We did two schools and then.
Then coronavirus wiped us out, so we did that one. Okay, anything you want to comment other than what Terry said is there is not a lot of things that we can mark as, what did you say, Terry?
Actionable.
Actionable accountability on them. Okay, kind of keep those in mind. All right, so now here we are with a subject that I totally know nothing about. And we've sent out quite a few different papers to kind of get everybody's brain focusing on what a strategic plan might be. And I have given you a copy of the one that says Cache County School District Strategic Plan Proposal, which was the one that Jeff gave us last meeting. And I've had time to look it over. Hope all of you had time to look it over. And so Jeff, is there anything more you want to say on this? And then we'll see where we need to go from here.
The only thing I think with the goals is they need to be able to be measured. We need to establish what the metric is that we will use to define success or failure. So I would think that, I'm not really good at wordsmithing them exactly, but this, the, the goals are a general, what, general thought about where, where, based on what we had talked about in our evaluation and discussions that we've had, this is, these are the, what I interpreted to be everybody's feelings about where we need to establish our goals. And so it would just be, you know, how do we need to word this so that, and how do we define what the metrics we're going to use to define what success or failure is on?
Okay. All right, so the district just came out hot off the press today.
Yeah.
With a strategic plan that they.
Well, it's just, it's just information and it's strategic direction. I don't know if you saw it on your.
Oh, no, please hand it him out.
Okay. And we just thought maybe we could surprise, provide you with some things that you can think about and how they correlate with your, your strategic plan proposal. But this is just some direction from the school district. I think the first thing that you need to understand is there's some targets that are set by the state. If you go down to the 2018, near right in the middle, it says 2018 state, and then it says 2018 Cache County School District. You really need to put 2018, 19, because they're really the ninth, it's the 19. That's the last year we have test data for, okay? So if you're wondering why we don't have 1920, we didn't test at the end of the last school year. So you can see the targets the state has set. You can see where we're at. You got to recognize that some of the targets have changed. The curriculum's changed, the testing has changed, so the percentage would have dropped because the tests got harder. So as you go across there, you'll see that in third grade literacy, we're at eighty-three percent. We used to be in the nineties, okay? They upped the standard as to how, what, what you had to be to be proficient. But we're still way above the state at forty-eight point six. Now, when you get to English language proficiency, the target, we're a little below that for 2022, but our goal will be to try and get there. Math proficiency, not too far behind that. Science proficiency, we'll certainly try and meet that goal. High school graduation, we're above the ninety point one. ACT, we're kind of right there. And readiness coursework, we'll have, we're still working on some things there. But this is just information, things that we're working on as a district. So if they can tie in to your mission, vision, priorities and goals, it's just a resource sheet for you to, to use as your.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think this is great. And.
The goals are good.
The goals are really good. The areas are really good. And I think they coordinate pretty well with what.
And you might want to take, we, we, we just, we, we wondered whether we should give you some stuff or just let you go ahead. And finally, we just came to the conclusion, the best way we could maybe help you was just to give you some of our ideas and some of our goals that we're working on from a district standpoint. And you might want to take this document and just compare it to your document, spend a week or two looking at it, see how they correlate, see whether you want to go a different direction or, or use some of that. We just thought we'd give you some information to try and help you.
Well, I appreciate it, and I, I think the goals are great, and they do coordinate with what we have so far.
And then how you put it together in your document. If you don't want it to look like this, this just takes, this is just off of the state one. We just took and basically said, okay, if we were to duplicate what the state has done, but for us, it would be, look more like this than what they had.
Sure.
But this is awesome because in all the years I've been in this district, this is the first time I've ever seen anything like this.
With a strategic direction.
Well, just to know what the point of the district is.
Yeah. We've always had documents similar to this, but they've, Jen, we've just used them as, as district office goals and direction. They haven't extrapolated into your goals and your direction. There's a little bit of difference between the two of us, but there's an awful lot of overlap too. And you don't have to have certainly different goals than what we have. This just tells you the direction where we've been going and, and are continuing to go.
Well, one thing I have read about strategic plans is they need to tie in with what the district has. We shouldn't be at odds with each other.
And I have, I've just seen so many strategic plans that sit on a shelf and a year later you look at them, and we don't operate that way here, and, and I hope not to ever operate that way. So we, we try to keep our goals pretty academically oriented. There's a lot of pressure right now for social emotional health of kids, and we certainly feel that. So there are some things that we are doing. We now have a, we're back to where we were years ago. We have a counselor in every elementary school now that we, we got out of that mindset a while ago, but we're, as of this year, we have a counselor in every, every school. We have health aides in every school. COVID certainly is taking up a lot of our resources and time. And you'll see in some other documents that I've given you that, you know, when we gathered the whole bushel basket full of apples and brought them in, we had about three cases that were already going when we gathered everybody in. We're now up to eight. And that's much better than I, than I thought it would be. What we weren't expecting is the number of kids that would be quarantined at high schools just because of one case. But they, those kids go from school classroom to classroom. And so whoever they sat by in that classroom for at least fifteen minutes had to be quarantined. So that first one we did at Mountain Crest got up to about thirty-eight kids. And we, we kind of cut it down and just a little from that with the advice of the health department. So we're kind of looking now at just the kids that are sitting in front and side and the back and not going back two rows. So we're going to have less kids, but we've, it's easy to say the things you're going to do until you do them and it affects an individual child of a set, of a set of parents. And then at that point, they're looking for some way that their kid was doing nothing wrong, but all of a sudden he's home.
I heard about it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure you have. There's not a lot of options right now. The state, they met yesterday, they met again today. There was hope that maybe we could cut that time from fourteen days down to like, we would give a rapid test after five days of exposure. If they were negative, we would give the second swab test, and if they came back within two or three days negative, then we would let the kid come back totally to school because they've had two tests that indicate negative. The state epidemiologist is not so much in favor of that, so I haven't heard back today. We've got the state super kind of helping us. We went from, they were going to court, let them quarantine in school, that was the original, to fourteen days. And we were hoping maybe we could meet in the middle, but I don't know if that's going to happen or not. But the best thing we can do is just play by the rules and keep the numbers down. And I can see us getting to graduation. But it won't be that we'll be doing dances and parades. So if you've been getting those kind of calls, we've just said it's, let's get down the road a ways and see if we can just keep kids in school, and then we'll see if we can add the activities.
Sure. So a question on that.
Okay.
One principal contacted me. She said, I don't want, because Mountain Crest is first for homecoming. She says, I don't want to say, we're not having a dance, and then three weeks later, I don't want to hear Skyview's having one. So is it general or not having it?
No, it is, we're not having.
So I just saw everybody's on the same.
Yep.
Okay, because that was her concern.
Okay. Okay, so.
So if you want to take and mail those documents together or something.
Who authored this?
Well, we all did. Tim did. Tim put the final thing together.
Okay, so if, if I was to try and put it all together for an updated proposal for everybody, who would you suggest that I work with? Tim?
Yeah.
All right.
Are you all right if I do that?
Yes, I am. And I just wanted to go through each of your categories and see if anybody has some comments. So on your computer, if you don't have a, well, you do, you have the paper copy, and it's also on your computer. Let's just take each one, section by section, and just throw in your comments as to what you think needs to be changed or keep it from what you have looked at and studied, and then that will give Jeff some feedback to move forward with that. Okay, everybody, I think we are all okay with the mission statement, right? Okay, what about the vision statement when you compare it with the district, with the, the one that I gave you from USB E and then the one that I handed out to you with USB A? Their mission statements are very, very short.
Yeah, this is very long.
It's very long. So I, I, here's what I was thinking when I looked at it, is if we can cut down the vision statement and maybe use some of this information as goals.
As what? I'm sorry.
Goals.
Oh, goals, okay.
Okay, all right.
What if we just use the last paragraph of the vision statement as our vision statement?
We pledge to prioritize the students' well-being, support a culture where students and staff feel appreciated and respected, and provide fairness to the parents, students, personnel. and provide fairness to the parents, students, personnel, and citizens of Cache County School District. Does it need to be more than that? No.
No, I don't think so.
What do you think?
I like that, Terry.
I like that.
Okay, so that will be our vision statement until we revise. And then, um, Jeff, will you just look over this upper part and see where it might, they might fit in as goals?
Sure.
Okay, um, priorities or goals?
So I, so I took, I took the first three from the USB, uh, side, because I thought those are also ones that we we would want to have.
Um, I think safety and health is good, and good teachers, and personalized teaching and learning. Do you like those three as goals? And I think we've got it on the district one, too, under teacher excellence. There's this brief, ours could, we could add more if we need to. Um, effective stakeholder communication. You don't want to keep something about that?
Would, that's what part of our meeting discussion tonight is about.
Yeah, that was a lot, we had a lot of discussion tonight.
Okay, let's keep that one then. Uh, empower continuous improvement, were you thinking for teachers?
Well, so just in five minutes, um, a couple places that I've worked at will be for our continuous improvement programs. What we've done is, uh, anybody in the plan, if they see an idea, if they have an idea on something that they think will make, uh, work go better, they can submit what they call a a continuous improvement idea. There's a committee that meets every month, and they select out of all of the entries, you know, maybe four or five that would provide the most, uh, what, most improvement opportunity? And then what they do is recognize these people, there's a, you know, some really good gift cards, and then they present them in front of their peers as a, uh, as a recognition. And we do that every month, and we've, we've had a lot of good ideas come from the people that are in the trenches that, uh, a lot of, you know, if, looking at it from twenty thousand feet, you can't see it, but then when you're in the trenches, you can see some things, and it's, it saves us quite a bit of money. And so my thought was, uh, maybe on a district level, we could implement the same type of a thing where, uh, as people see opportunities for improvement in in, uh, in the processes, in whatever it is, whether it's with the buses or the grounds or whatever, that they could submit these ideas, and then we could put together, uh, some committee that would review these and then, uh, recognize the people for the ones that they selected.
Would that fit in with, uh, stakeholder communication?
Possibly.
Hey, we could offer gift cards to anybody who comes to our meetings.
There you go, that's, yeah.
Have a raffle.
That's right.
Anyway, that that was an idea I had as a way of recognizing people for, uh, and and it may, it may give the improvement opportunities in the district. You don't have to do it, it's just an idea I had that's, uh, worked really well for me at times.
Is.
I like it.
The, um, the continuous improvement one is more focused toward employees, isn't it?
Yeah.
Than stakeholders.
Uh-huh.
Okay. So, uh, on that one, because the district has one on teacher excellence, right? Would that tie in with that one?
Possibly.
Okay.
I think it would tie in with all of them. I mean, if you had ideas to improve, you know.
Academics.
Safety and health of students.
Safety's a big one, we found a lot of safety improvements, uh, in doing this, uh, exercise, but, uh.
I I think to me, it would be a bullet point that would support all the other bullet points.
Okay.
To some degree, because, you know, if you could, you know, ideas that would improve, that's my question, any.
So maybe we could take that off the priority, but, uh, include it as part, as an opportunity with these, that what would, it would strengthen some of these others, then.
And then on the comprehensive resource management, what is that?
Well, so I guess, uh, I'm responsible for a lot of expensive equipment and a lot of people that, uh, and and I guess that's something that happens in the district anyway, but I I guess maybe I need to become more familiar with, uh, how that process works, but I don't know. This is, uh, just an idea I had about, I don't know if we have it improvement opportunities there or if there's something that we can do to, uh, if it does something that we need to look at. I threw it down here for us as a discussion point.
Okay, so if you look at our vision statement, um, the second paragraph is, it's our duty to provide a balanced and efficient budget, and I think it goes on maybe with some of those other things. Would that tie in?
Mm-hmm.
So it might be just stated that way.
Okay.
That we have somewhere we oversee the budget. Any other thoughts on that, anybody? Are we driving you crazy?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, all right.
I think, though, his com- comprehensive resource management is, is not just overseeing the budget, but I think it ties in with your continuous improvement with employees, because we, the district has a lot of expensive equipment, um, some not so expensive, but mostly we work with kids' minds. And so, um, to me, those those last two kind of go hand in hand in the district sense, because, um, employees who are empowered to offer continuous improvement ideas would also, I assume, um, be doing resource management type, or be giving resource management suggestions.
Well, it would be more in line with human resource management, how we handle our employees and how employees handle the kids that are entrusted to them. I think there's a whole level of concern there that you can't place a monetary value on, but you certainly can realize that it's, you're dealing with the most valuable things that any parent can trust you with, so.
I really like the continuous improvement idea, though, of having a committee to review ideas, submitted ideas.
The thing that, the reason why it works is then people really have skin in the game, uh, for, you know, the the suggestions that they made, uh, the opportunity to sell it to their peers, and, uh, it it works out pretty well, so.
So for us, if we did something like that, would it be like like we'd put a a place on the webpage or on the board page of where they could submit an idea there?
Wherever Tim thinks it'd be the best, but yeah, it's all submitted electronically, so the committee can review it electronically, and they pick the ones that are the, they, you know, however many we decide that we'd like to do.
Okay.
And, uh, anyway.
All right, um, any other suggestions for the priorities? It looks like we have covered, um, the academic, uh, the teacher excellence, the safety. We don't really have anything in there for digital teaching and learning, unless we include it with, um, academics some way. You want it?
Personalized teaching and learning, I think that's what we're about with.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Good, thanks.
Because there's a lot in there about blended ones.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, uh, then the next one is the goals, and I was kind of wondering on our goals, um, if they could be stated more like this, you know, the topics.
Absolutely.
On there. Okay, um, do all of you like the goals that he has set? Which is to define and update a strategic plan and communicate it to our stakeholders to develop a process for regular reporting of progress made with the strategic plan action register, what's that?
Well, basically what it is, is it's just, uh, actions that are generated if someone has an action to go do something, that we have some kind of tracking, uh, mechanism that allows us to return and report on what we've done until they go to completion, and then maybe a pre and a post evaluation to see how successful it was.
It's like formative assessments instead of summative, which is what we've been doing with our goals, is summative.
Okay, so they're actually in the process to check and make sure that we are doing it.
Yeah, so a regular evaluation point, people are bringing back how they completed the actions. This is, these are the successes that we've seen, so we can measure, have we been successful or not, and what, uh, what we tried to achieve.
Okay, so would that tie in with the district's, um, target stuff down here? Or that we could, or would that go under met, that wouldn't be really metrics.
Um, I don't know, we cut the iron out, that the process.
Okay, all right, let's not get into that then today.
That could be a deep dive.
Yeah, that'd be a deep dive.
Okay, all right, and then, um, let's see, correlate district policies, um, everybody good with that one? Anybody have ideas to make it better?
Well, those have to be done, so.
So we might as well set it as the goal. Okay.
There's no sense in making district policy that don't meet all those guidelines.
Okay.
Yeah, so maybe we don't even need it on there, I don't know.
Well, I think a big part of our job is to.
Ensure that it happens.
Yeah, so maybe some.
Can I just suggest that maybe you just strike district policies with, just correlate strategic action plan with state federal law and USB guidelines or something like that?
Okay.
Okay, and then the next one, establish plan for regular communication with legislators to share progress and need. Um, any comments on that? Okay, so we'd have to come up with a plan, how we're gonna do it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then establish continuous.
Does everybody feel like that that's necessary, I mean?
Absolutely.
That seems like a big one in my eyes, but.
Me, too.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
And.
I think it helps, I think that trying to do that in the past few years has got us to the point that Steve talked about earlier in this meeting, where we actually have a working, a good working relationship with our legislators, instead of always being at odds. Um, I had multiple people who were at the delegate assembly afterward, um, no, the pre-delegate assembly, when we had, um, the Senate President Stuart Adams and the House Speaker Brad Wilson there that night to answer questions, to have a discussion like you have been talking about, of where we could ask them questions, they could ask us questions about education moving forward in twenty twenty-one. And, um, there were several people sitting near me at the end who said, how did we get to this point where we're so congenial and we we kind of trust these guys that they're gonna, they're gonna do what we ask, and that we can go ask them? And and so I think that because so many school boards in Utah are doing that, regular communicating with, regularly communicating with legislators and trying to share great things that are happening in our schools as well as the needs.
But maybe a better way, uh, because it's, it sounds like that's already built into the culture a little bit, so that could be maintain regular communication.
Okay.
Because we already have avenues for that.
Mm-hmm.
Or maintain and, you know, build or something like that.
Okay.
And establish continuous improvement plan.
Is this for board members or for?
This is the, so the one I was talking about, above the, the plan to allow the district employees to.
To take input, yeah. I definitely think we should keep that as a goal, or make that a goal.
All right, so I'm gonna just send a little bit of verbiage to you, Jeff.
Please.
On some of these and things that maybe we can add.
English is not my strong.
Oh, you know what? I have dug myself in such a hole now, trying to show that I know so much about English, that I hardly dare send anything out anymore, because I make so many mistakes. Rough draft. Okay, then the metrics, do you think we could get more information from the district on, um, the metrics, how how they would apply to this once we get it set up?
I think if you just let Tim.
I think this does it, this does it right there.
Yeah.
Jeff.
Well, just work with him on that, coordinate it.
Okay.
I think they can work that out.
Okay, all right, Jeff, you want somebody to help you, or is it easier for you just to work alone with Tim?
Why don't I work with Tim, and then I'll send it out to everybody to review it once we come to a sweet spot there, and then everybody can give their feedback.
Okay, so last but final question, is everybody okay with us doing a strategic plan? I forgot to ask that question first. I feel like that will benefit us as a board in overseeing things. Okay. All right, anything else that you have that you would like to have Jeff consider, email it to him. So now we've got three people to mail, email stuff to as we get ideas. Okay, so don't go home and tuck this away, think about it, and come up with some help for it. Okay, thank you, Jeff, and, um, Chris, and Terry, and Roger, and Randall, and Larry for all that you do. Um, I really feel like our board is doing something, and I hope we're doing something that's beneficial.
Yeah, if you were, if you were working on producing a big, thick document, I'd tell you, I'm not with you, but I can be with you for, if we can get it on two pages.
Yeah, I think it has to be two pages.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, and thank you, Superintendent, for getting us this, that really does help a lot.
You're welcome.
Um, I I'm kind of feeling like the the guy flying the airplane while he's still trying to build it, because I just don't know how to put a strategic plan together, but thanks for all of your knowledge and input and help. And, um, really appreciate the district and you, Steve, this has not been an easy year. I I can't believe you haven't slit your wrists yet.
Well, as long as I can keep teachers from doing that, I'll be okay, that's my goal.
We don't know that, his his wrists are covered up right now, so.
Oh, my gosh, every time something more comes, I just think, oh, how long are they gonna keep sticking with this before they just jump off a cliff?
The last email that Tim sent out yesterday, by the way, they're on a motorcycle ride, dumb, we call them Dumb and Dumber. They're, they're on a trip all the way up through Yellowstone and then up to Flo Lopass, and then down to McCall, then over to Boise, and then up to Stanley, and then home by Saturday. And I said, you know, we have a retreat, and they said, yeah, but I think you can handle it.
Enjoy it without us.
So, uh, I don't know where I'm going with this discussion, though. What, why'd they start talking about it?
Uh. I don't know.
I don't know, but anyway, they're having fun.
Talking about COVID.
About what?
Talking about them dealing with COVID and all that stuff.
Everything has come up, yeah.
Yeah, and so, uh, there've just been, oh, he sent out a, an email saying.
It was hilarious.
That next year, that, uh, in essence, the the locusts will come, and then.
The frogs.
The plague of frogs.
Then the frogs. And, uh, yeah, we've just about had a little bit of everything, uh, but the the highlight is that it's manageable right now if we can get teachers to feel comfortable teaching with masks, and if we can keep the number of kids that are quarantined down to a manageable level, because each one of those kids that goes out is two weeks that the teacher has to work with them while they're out. And we set that up that way because we thought they would be better off in the hands of the teacher in the classroom rather than going to another teacher online somewhere. But it has added a measurable amount of work for our teachers. And, uh, we are still, still trying to figure out how to lighten the load and give them more time to work with the kids who are not in school. So we might be coming back to you to do something, but, uh, it's a real tough battle right now. And I think it will get easier as they get used to not seeing smiles on faces, and, uh, so I, I think we're gonna be all right.
Great.
Yeah.
So you're last on the agenda, is there anything?
Yeah, and I'm just gonna tell you, you have all the document you need. Mike wrote you a love letter, Gary wrote you a love letter, and Tim wrote you a, uh, a little expose on, uh, on COVID. Our nurses, boy, they have been, they have been worked, because when these names get forwarded to us, for some reason, it's been Friday night and Saturday and Sunday, which requires that we do all the contact tracing over the weekend, and, uh, boy, everybody has just put in an ordered amount of time, and, uh, we can't hire enough people right now for. And uh, we can't hire enough people right now for all our aides in all the positions. They're just not out there. They, uh, the economy in this part of the world is not, not in bad shape and they're, the people who wanna work are working. So it's really hurt in having aides to help our teachers with the kids that are online and reading aids and and uh, so we're struggling a little bit with trying to find new, the amount of people, but um, we'll keep you posted, but uh, it's been a much better start than I thought. But there's always the next day, you just never know what's gonna trip you up.
Windstorm, earthquake, fire.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, uh, when we were sitting in the district office and we had Tim on the computer and we had all the schools up and who had electricity and who didn't have electricity? How long's it gonna be before they get electricity? Tim just turned to me and said, I bet you've never done this before in your career. I said, yeah, this is another first. Yeah, sitting in the dark and trying to figure out, can we really have school or should we just pull the plug on everything? And then you had those schools that had power saying, let us, let us stay. And you had those that didn't have power and things that you never think about. People can't get out of the garage if they, if there's no electricity. So it doesn't matter whether you want them to come to school or not, they can't get out. So it's just a mirror of the things you think about. The school can have power, but if all the kid, all the hounds that feed that school don't have power, they, they could care less that you have power at your school. You tell them to come to school and they're, they're gonna look at you like, what's the matter with you? So we had to make an individual call on every one of those schools. And uh, I think we made the right call on, pretty much down the line. Uh, Lincoln and, and Hiram was, I mean, when you have your own power system, you don't have the resources that a Utah Power has, but Hiram did a marvelous job of getting those schools back up online.
But it was interesting because Canyon wasn't affected.
I know, yeah.
They had schools, so.
And the kids. Mountain Crest?
Kids from Avon Paradise didn't have power, but they had schools.
Green Canyon sitting right there, my house had no power, district office had no power, Hyde Park had no power. Green Canyon, Wayne, I'm talking to him at, at five thirty in the morning and I say, Wayne, uh, Mike and I both had, have no power, but I can't get Tim or Gary or anybody else to answer, so they must not be having problems. And he's, well, I can see the A up on the hill, it's lit up and the lights at Green Canyon are on. And I'm thinking, whoa, you know, you can, you got a view of the valley over there. But it was just so spotty. And when you called Utah Power and Light, they were just, they were just scratching their head because it was, they knew it wasn't a main thing, they could go flip a switch and everybody'd come back on. So it was quite a day, yeah.
Well, you did a great job and it's really nice to have uh, people with experience.
Let me end it with this. This was my old buddy William Perkey. There is a growing awareness that education is not about normal distribution, standardized test scores, labeling and grouping students, relentless and ruthless competition, and certainly not about being number one. The revolution is underway because growing number of people realize that education is about inviting every single person who enters a school to realize his or her relatively boundless potential in all areas of worthwhile human endeavor. It is concerned with more than grades, attendance, and academic achievement. It is concerned with the process of becoming a decent and productive human being. That's what we need to think about every, every time we meet. I can give you all the test scores in the world, but if those kids don't feel loved in the classroom, it's, we're not doing what we're supposed to do. So a strategic plan should guide us, but we've always gotta remember, we're dealing with people, not product. So, and if you wanna know how, you know, the uh, in nineteen fifty to sixty, when people, most people think they'd like to go back to that time in our country, thirty-four percent of the people had high school diplomas.
Oh, wow.
It's now ninety percent.
Oh, my gosh. Well, the job market has changed so much that you have to have a.
So thanks for all you do.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Um, would everybody be okay if I just write up a little appreciation to the teacher staff and I'll send it out to you and you can tell me if I need to change it and then we'll get it sent out?
I'd also like to nominate Terry as the school board member of the week.